All right, it's seven o'clock in the evening in Gardner, Kansas. I want to call the Gardner City Council to order. Will you please rise if you can for this, signing of pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is public hearing. A public hearing for receiving comments on a request of waiver of distance limitation for the Grand Slam Craft Beer Wine and Spirits Fest to be held in Celebration Park. Entertained motion on opening the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Very nice that you, that was in the mic, made sure you spoke into the microphone. Yes. Motion winner, second Deaton, that we open a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments to a request for a waiver of distance limitation to allow for the distribution of cereal malt beverage, wine, and spirit samples within 200 feet of a school church or library during the Grand Slam Craft Beer Wine and Spirits Fest to be held October 1st, 2021 at Celebration Park. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We cannot hear you, Mark. Still can't hear you. All right, yeah, I see you're saying aye, so I appreciate that, yes. All opposed, any abstentions? The public hearing is now open, just for the purposes of the folks in the room here. There is a time clock on my left, your right, actually, my right, your left, sorry, it's Monday. And please come forward if you, if you do have a particular, something to say about this public hearing. Keep your remarks within five-minute time limit, if you could please. No profanity, no personal attacks. With that being said, if you wish to speak, please, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for six, second Deaton, that we close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. All right, let's move on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of the public hearing. Again, the same ground rules apply for public hearing, ground rules, which is the five-minute time clock on my right, your left. No profanity, no personal attacks. With that being said, the podium is now open. If you want us to come forward, you can speak on any, any topic other than the past public hearing topic that we just discussed. Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Deana Kincaid. I'm from Spring Hill. My name's Deana Kincaid. I'm, live on the Spring Hill Gardner line, but I am the manager of one of the fireworks tents here in Gardner. And we had issues with another one of the tents this year and actually had to call the police twice. And I just want the council to be aware of the problem with this, this particular vendor. They were shooting off fireworks five, maybe 10 feet outside their tents, had one fall over and actually go into the tent. Fortunately, it wasn't a big one because I had visions of some of the YouTube videos you see of fireworks tents going up in a blaze of glory. Had that been the case, probably all of the glass in front of the old Price Shopper would have been blown off. It could have actually made its way over to our tent, set another one off. We do have periodically, just the public come and try and shoot fireworks in the old Price Shopper parking lot, and we shoo them off, and they're okay with that. But the, the tent in front of the old Price Shopper, those are, that's the ones that we had the issues with. And I know twice I personally called the police. I know council member Casey was eating ice cream at the ice cream parlor the night that that happened, and she even told me that, she told her son, "We gotta get out of here before we get blown up." I mean, it was just very scary. So whether it happens in the fireworks permitting part or in their permit for their business, I would like something to where it's written, they can't shoot that close. Because it was public's, I mean, I had visions of all kinds of bad things happening, and it just, it wasn't safe, wasn't safe. So that's all, that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Deaton, second Winters, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I think Mark said aye. We're working on it, Mark.
Aye.
Oh, now we hear ya. All right. All opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. There's nothing on the planning and zoning consent. There is a committee recommendation, actually two of them. Committee recommendation, item number one, consider adopting an ordinance, approving rezoning of the proposed Treadway Apartments, and considering accepting the associated site plan. Development director Dave Knopick, how you doing tonight?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. This evening, we do have an application before you for a rezoning. It was submitted on June 7th and was considered by the Planning Commission on July 26th of this year. The rezoning is actually for a small sliver of land, just over two acres in size, and it's a downzoning from the C3 district to an R3 district. The zoning had previously been approved as part of the Grotta development. As they have gone through their planning process in the various phases, and the apartment piece of this has come online, they found they needed a little additional land to be in the R3 zone, so that's prompting the downzoning request here in this particular case. So again, as I mentioned, we're downzoning from C3 to R3 for approximately 2.1 acres. In order to do that, it requires the action of the council to approve an ordinance. That ordinance has been drafted in place before you in your packets tonight. The Planning Commission is recommending approval, and I stand ready for any questions that you may have regarding the project. Also, the applicant's representative is here tonight if you have questions particular to the application.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Knopick. Appreciate it. Any public comment on committee recommendation, item number one? And if the applicant wishes to speak, they can come forward as well. Seeing none, any questions for David or the applicant or members of staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on ordinance number 2714.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Gorsick, second Deaton, that we accept the recommendations, Planning Commission approved ordinance number 2714. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of districts of certain lands located in the city of Gardner, Kansas, under the authority granted by Title 17 of the Municipal Code of the City of Gardner. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council member Gorsick?
Yes.
Council member Roberts?
Yes.
Council member Baldwin? Where did he go?
We lost Council member Baldwin.
I see him.
Council member Baldwin, give me a thumbs up if you approve, or a thumbs down if you disapprove. All right, we have a yes from councilman Baldwin.
Council member Deaton?
Yes.
Council member Winters?
Yes.
Mayor Shute?
Yes. Ordinance number 2714 passes 6-0. Moving on to committee recommendation number two. Consider adopting an ordinance, approving a rezoning for the proposed Cypress Creek subdivision, and consider accepting the associated preliminary development plan. Mr. Knopick?
Yes, sir. This application is for an acreage just under 100 acres in size, located north of the Gardner High School on Madison. It's the vacant parcel between Madison and 167th Street in that area. It was previously annexed into the city of Gardner on June 22nd of 2021. At that time, it retains its county zoning, which is the RUR zoning district. As part of this development request, the applicant has come in with an RP2 zoning. This is for a single-family development. The reason the RP2 zoning is the request is because of the size of the lots. The lots themselves are a little bit smaller than the typical suburban lots that our R1 district would allow. Our R1 district has a minimum lot width of 70 feet. These lots are in the 50-foot range up to about 65 in some instances. So in order to accommodate that without deviations, the RP2 zoning is what's important here. Because this is a planned district, and it's deemed to be a single-family development, the preliminary plan is also part of this. So when you approve this rezoning, if you do approve it, that preliminary plan is part of the process, and that would become part of the regulations for that particular development site. Any changes from single-family development and the development proposed in that would require, again, another rezoning action, or at least another revised preliminary development plan action, that would require a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission at that point in time. It's important just to indicate that the comprehensive plan does identify this parcel as low-density residential, future land use, so this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did recommend approval. There were three conditions that they placed on there that are in your packet and also part of the draft ordinance for this. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission and from staff is that you approve of ordinance 2715, which would change that zoning classification, and also approve the preliminary development plan. I stand ready for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Knopick. Any questions from the public on committee recommendation, item number two? Seeing none, any questions for Dave or staff? Council member Gorsick?
Thank you, Mayor. Excited to have this development come to Gardner. Great use of that land. A couple of questions that I have, Mr. Knopick, is just based on the proximity to Gardner Edgerton High School. What kind of traffic studies will be taken in order to, you know, mitigate what's forthcoming?
So, so preliminary traffic study has been done. The important part of this project is, although it has 289 lots, it is actually divided into several pods, so not the whole development. We'll be emptying out onto Madison at this point in time, although a significant portion of the southwest pod of lots there will empty out onto Madison, or will have two, if you will, access points on Madison. One will be directly across from the high school drive. As you know, from Public Works standpoint, we encourage that those drives align so that there aren't crossing left-hand turns going on. So they may have as part of that as well, some safety considerations as far as any turn lanes and things like that, but we'll continue to look at the traffic studies with Public Works as the final plans come in. So a preliminary traffic study has been done on this, and that'll be finalized as part of the final plan approval.
Thank you, Dave. The second question I have, same topic, on the north side, it's 167th Street. What advancements will be made to 167th Street considering the current condition of width of road and supporting that new kind of, and again, it's a phased approach, so I get it, but you'll have, my estimates would be two-thirds of that development would be exiting northbound. Obviously, there's a current neighborhood running parallel to it on the east side that would feed or exit through there, but anyway, 167th is just not where it needs to be, and again, this is space.
Right. So I think the, the difficult part with 167th Street is that we are having more and more development on 167th Street. At some point, that's going to trigger improvements in that whole cross-section. So the balance point we have with new development like this is at least getting the improvements that are safety-oriented improvements at this point in time. I believe on 167th Street, as part of the study and everything, there will be safety improvements as far as D cell lanes and turn lanes at the entry points to help accommodate that, but the cross-section, the basic cross-section of 167th will remain in its two-lane format. I might ask Director Hedley if he wants to comment on that as well, because Public Works will be involved in those improvements.
While, while we're getting that, is there possible we could get a, a picture of the subdivision? I think it might be hard for people to picture what this is going to look like.
We'll see if we'll get one up here for you in just a second.
It'll help with the traffic flow, the understanding of the traffic flow.
The, the other discussion we've had while we're waiting on that, the other discussion we've had along 167th is the incorporation of any temporary trail or sidewalk potentially for the people who may move into this area, completing that loop. But again, without cross-section designs for 167th, it's hard for us to say, do a permanent sidewalk or some high level of improvements there if we're going to come back at a future date and tear those out. So we'll have discussions with the applicant at the final stage regarding that, that area, and we may have a temporary solution when it comes to pedestrian circulation. I don't know. Kellen, did you want to talk to the traffic side of 167th while we're waiting here?
Yeah, so the traffic study itself will take into account peak traffic coming out of there. So as we look to update traffic counts this fall, we'll be working on those probably through November, those traffic counts along with the anticipated traffic out of there will inform priority of work along 167th Street. So we're still, we've still got some data collection to do from a condition and a traffic count study on that area.
So it's on the radar. That's a good thing. The last question I had, which I didn't have documented earlier, is because it's a planned approach, or a phased approach, as you put it, Dave, what is the northern third, excuse me, northern two-third, what is that phased date, I guess?
I think I'm going to let the applicant's rep speak to that because there will be four phases to this, and I know that they're going to start in the southern portion, but I'm not sure about the northern portion, so.
Thank you, Harold.
You bet, councilman. My name is Harold Phelps, Phelps Engineering. Glad to be able to be here this evening and present this project. Try to get right to the point here. So we're looking at probably four phases for this project. Generally, the first two phases will be, and north is to the left on the plan year we're looking at right now. So we do plan to start at the south end, and the first two phases will be that southwest quadrant, and then we'll move north from there. So the 167th Street phase would be the last phase that we get to.
And I know this might be a crystal ball question, Harold, but what, what is the dates or period of time or years, maybe?
All right, so, you know, that's all economic-
Absolutely.
-dependent, but they're looking, so this is about a 75, 80 lot phase, and typically, based on their pattern, that'll be probably one a year. So start a phase next year, get a phase in the ground, it'd be a year to build out while you're building the next phase. So realistically, it's a five-to-six-year project for completion.
Okay, thank you. So four, five, six, somewhere in there?
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, question, Harold. I appreciate you coming to the microphone. When we're looking at the, the ingress and egress into and out of this property, the two points of potential conflict that I see, where I was talking, are, in the first, the first phase, you've got the westbound Fountain, Fountain Street stuff going out to, to Madison, Waverly, I mean, not Madison, Waverly. And then you've got your two sub-streets at the bottom that, that basically line up with the high school car loop-
Right.
-lanes. Have, has there been any discussion particularly on that side over there with the school district on, on traffic mitigation potentially?
So we, we did submit our traffic report to the school district, and we've had conversations with them. They've not indicated any opposition to what we're proposing. The traffic recommend, the, the recommendation from the traffic engineers on the main entrance is to limit the left turn movement in the morning from that intersection. So if you want to make a left-hand movement, you'll have to go to the, to the Westerly Drive and make that left-hand movement to, so you don't have all that turning at that intersection.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of points of conflict there.
Right.
That's the case. And then you've got all the high school kids that like to cut people off and things like that.
Right.
Never happens, but I remember when I was 17.
We all drove that way.
Yeah. And then, yes, go on, go on.
I'm sorry, no, go ahead. You finished. I thought you were done.
Nope, nope, go on, please.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. I did have a question, since we're talking about traffic and traffic study and I'm a bit deeper, you and our staff. The intersection of Waverly and 167th, I know I've gotten, people expressed concerns on that because it's hard to, there's no, there's a stop sign for the Waverly traffic, but not for the 167th, and people will go kind of fast there. And I, they were expressing concerns with all this, which is good, there's all this development, that there's, that's going to impede that intersection. Are we looking at, I don't know if this study incorporated that specific intersection or if we need to, but it might be something.
We actually did, if I may.
Okay, thank you.
We actually did look at that intersection and do not have a negative impact on it.
Okay.
But we do make a recommendation to continue to monitor that a four-way stop may be needed at that intersection.
I was just going to mention that that would probably be part of your analysis of 167th, right, Kellen?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, so.
And I know it was probably on the radar, it's just somebody mentioned it, and I thought, oh, I should ask. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Harold. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Councilwoman Worsley, you have anything?
Just, there was no public comment at the Planning Commission, was there on this item?
Not at the Planning Commission. We did have a couple of public inquiries prior to the Planning Commission meeting. One was a property owner that's there on the end of Fountain, where this would be meshing in, spoke to that individual. There were some comments after the meeting. There were a number of residents that were present that listened to the presentation of the item, had some inquiries about some of the hedgerow trees and some other things afterwards, but I think the applicant was part of that, or the applicant's rep was there and heard some of those things. So as we're looking at final, we're going to consider some of those comments, but we'll see how this all kind of filters together. I think the important thing to understand is there won't be another public hearing on the item. So we're trying to take whatever input we can and integrate that in as part of the review when the final gets submitted to us, the final plan gets submitted to us, so.
Excellent.
Mayor, just a curious question, David. I appreciate councilman Winters' question. Were those comments, maybe I missed them, were they not in the packet?
No, this was after the meeting itself.
Yes.
So there were, like I said, there were probably about 20 residents at the meeting who sat and listened, but no one got up and spoke to the particular item in opposition or support of it. I think many of them were looking for the information to understand what the development was at the time, but after the meeting, after we had adjourned in that, a number of people did stick around and had some further discussions about a number of items. There were a few people that, that just weren't sure in the hearing process if they wanted to really get up or should have gotten up and talked about a couple of things. I think they were more concerned about maybe how some things were being treated, either through construction phases and things like that. So those were kind of addressed, or at least Bob Case made sure he recorded some of those things. That's where we'll try to incorporate some of those thoughts when we talk to them.
One more question on that. Need, are, like you said, smaller footprint homes, is that correct? Or do we know, like, price range or targets for some of this?
I'm going to defer once again, and I'm going to look back here, so.
Because this, there is a need, I think, for certain price range.
I will let you know, when we look at the density of this area, this comes out to a pretty typical density. There's a lot of open space in this development, part of it because of the streamway that's going through there, and the open space that's being retained in this. So while the, the lots themselves are shrinking in size to that 50-foot level and things like that, that automatically puts us into a little bit smaller format homes to meet the setbacks and things from that perspective. But the applicant, I'm sure, can share with you what they're looking for as a target market, so.
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Don Draper with the applicant. I, do I need to give my address? 13635 Dove Road, P Ridge, Arkansas.
13635 Dove Road, Pea Ridge, Arkansas. Right now, we haven't determined exactly what the planned lineup is going to be for these homes. It'll be very similar to what we're doing here and actually over in Spring Hill. We have product that will fit on, which is a 40-foot pad is what we're looking at, 40-foot wide pad. We've got product that will fit on that from anywhere from, you know, 1,200, 1,300 feet up to close to 2,000. So it will be smaller format. We don't know what our averages might look like or anything like that at this point in time, but based on costs we have today, we would expect these to fall into, you know, 275 to 350 range on purchase price, if that makes sense.
That's Ford, Johnson County.
Absolutely.
So.
And that's our goal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dean, you have any questions for?
No.
What about you, Council Vice President, you have anything for David, the applicant?
I don't.
You're on mute.
I don't think we can hear us again.
Oh. He called. Yeah, he's, is there possibly we could give him one more?
I'll have to get my stuff in here.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to, yeah, that's all right. You got it? You don't have a thing? Okay, well, I'm sure you do, but we'll try to, we'll try to get you on the next item. Sorry about that. Okay, any other questions? All right, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 2715.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Deaton, that we accept the recommendations of the planning commission to adopt ordinance number 2715, an ordinance changing the zoning classification or districts of certain lands located in the city of Gardner, Kansas, under the authority granted by Title 17 of the Municipal Code of City of Gardner. City Clerk.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Councilmember Deborsec?
Yes.
Mayor Shute?
Yes, and Councilman Baldwin, can you hear me? And if you can, will you provide a thumbs up or thumbs down? All right. Our council member, Councilmember Baldwin is recorded as yes. So ordinance 2715 passes 6-0. All right, nothing on old business. Hey, you got to do what you got to do, right? New business item number one, consider request of a waiver of distance limitation, special event permit to allow for the distribution of samples of cereal malt beverages, wine and spirits within 200 feet of a school, church or library during the Grand Slam Craft Beer, Wine and Spirits Fest to be held October 1st, 2021 at Celebration Park. City Clerk Sharon Rose, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a housekeeping item in relation to the public hearing we held earlier this evening to allow for the consumption of craft wine, beer and spirits samples at Celebration Park.
Any public comment on new business item number one? Seeing none, any questions? I do have one question real quick, and what is the definition of sample?
Jason?
Mr. Bruce?
One sample is a two-ounce glass that you'll get with the purchase of your tickets.
Okay, thank you. By the way, welcome back from vacation. Feel good. All right, any questions from?
Oh, just great to have it back under the circumstances.
Got that right.
It's a great community event, lots of fun games out in the ball, the outfield of the ball field. Are you still going to, are you going to be doing the barbecue adjacent? Go ahead, Jason, I'm sorry.
No worries. That will be on a different weekend.
Oh, okay, so it's not in conjunction?
Not in conjunction, yes. It'll be a separate weekend. It'll be fun.
Okay, anyone else? Any questions from anyone else?
I'll be happy to pause.
Because if we, if we had five minutes, would that help to fix the issue?
Yeah.
Or we can table this. Skip it. We'll just skip it. Okay, we'll skip it for now. Let's move on to new business item number two. Consider authorizing the execution of a contract with Allied Power Group for repair and improvement work on the gas turbine cooling system. Gons Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Next year, we have a project for replacing the controls on both gas turbines. Right now, the controls are in their last leg. We're having problems finding parts and expertise. But prior to doing this upgrade, we need to work on the cooling system. The cooling system is basically, is used to cool the oil that is used for lubrication and lubricating the bearings and the gearbox. It's also used for controlling a hydraulic fuel valve. So the oil, as he worked through the terminal, heat up, then we use water to cool the oil. Right now, we cannot lower the temperature of the oil low enough, so we have to lower the generation of the gas turbine. So the project includes draining the oil reservoir, the water reservoir, pulling the heat exchangers and send them to a factory so they can inspect and repair the heat exchangers. We did an invitation to bid. We received three bids. Allied Power Group had the lowest bid and also is the most qualified. So staff are recommending an authorized city administrator to execute a contract with Allied Power for the repairs of the heated exchangers.
Okay, great, thank you, Gons. Any public comment on new business item number two? Seeing none, any questions for Gons or staff on this item? Yes.
Gons, thanks for the detail. I guess my only question is, and it's necessary in order to operate it, but how long or how much more do we need to invest in this particular piece of hardware before it becomes kind of upside down, if you will?
You're talking about the actual gas turbine? Every year, we do a Boriscope inspection that will look at the blades inside the compressor and the turbine. Based on the recent inspection was 2020 or 2019, they're in pretty good shape.
Okay. So we've got a life to invest in, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So the only kind of weak link is the cooling system and the control system.
Which sees it all up, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, I'm going to ask this question and I think we've had this discussion before, Gons, and that has to do with the gas turbine, the economics behind running those turbines. You know that we had the serious problems since the winter and our wholesale gas and electric prices went through the roof. And at the time, we had talked about having those turbines running as part of our power, as our, it's admittedly a limited power generation capability, we understand that, but there was the discussion and what we came to the conclusion of was that it would cost more money to run those turbines than it would to buy the higher-priced wholesale electric on the, you know, from, 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 come on, Steve, from, from the electric plant.
SVP?
Yeah, yeah, the Southwest Power as well as Dogwood. So what would be the, what would be the, again, we understand we're making some, we're allowing these things, this means allows it to continue to run, totally understand. The question though is, are, if we're not going to be able to run it even at times when we have very high marginal costs on the wholesale market, when would we run these? And is it to satisfy the power generation capability for the state or is that, just give me some enlightenment on that.
Okay, the gas turbines, as you said, their heat rate, the efficiency is pretty, pretty bad.
Yeah, it is.
So there are other units in the SPP power pool that can actually generate cheaper. However, the city has to have capacity.
Exactly.
So with the two gas turbines, we get about 27 megawatts of capacity. If we don't have those 27 megawatts capacity, we will have to buy a paper capacity at 2.5 per kilowatt hour per month.
Yeah.
So if you do the math, it's about $400,000 a year on paper capacity.
And obviously, it costs less to maintain the turbines than it would-
Correct. So if you invest on the control system, it's going to cost probably about $1 million and you can pay that paper capacity in about three years. Although the units won't run, you still have the capacity to purchase energy from the system. So without that capacity, you won't be able to purchase. You have to pay for the capacity and the energy.
Hence the investment.
Exactly.
That's investment, yes.
It's a cost benefit. I've been asked that question on a couple of occasions where they're just now, they're wondering, why didn't we fire up our, our generating capacity when we had that supply crunch back in February? And that's why I wanted you to answer that question because I think we all know what the answer is on the dais, but it's good for the public to know, hey, this is the reason why we have it and it prevents us from having to spend more money to get that equivalent capacity off the market.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on new business item number two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Deaton, second, Winters, that we authorize the city administrator to execute a contract with Allied Power Group for repair and improvement work on the gas turbine cooling system in the amount of $138,720.00. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? New business item number two passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gons, appreciate it. Is it quick to get anyone on the phone?
We're trying everything we can.
I have no problem taking a two-minute recess if that's going to allow them to do their work. We're having issues with the streaming as well with this, so I would rather that be completely working. All right, I want to take a, actually, we'll give them a five, we'll give them five minutes. Take a five-minute recess and we'll resume. Sorry?
Can you hear me?
Hey! Wait a minute, we were about to take a five-minute recess, Mark.
I vote no on that.
Thank you to IT, we've been trying everything.
Oh, no, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mark, for being able to make it, although it looks like an eagle's about to devour you. Up? Did we just lose him again?
No, he's still there. I'm just, he's still there.
Okay.
Are we going back to one?
Yeah, we're going back to new business item number one. We're going back to new business item number one. All right, and since we've already, I can reread it into the record, I guess, consider request for waiver of distance limitation, special event permit to allow for the distribution of samples of cereal malt beverages, wine and spirits within 200 feet of a school, church or library during the Grand Slam Craft Beer, Wine and Spirits Fest to be held October 1st, 2021 at Celebration Park. So my understanding is that Councilman, Council Vice President Baldwin had a question regarding this item?
Should have.
Am I gone?
Nope, you're here.
Okay, I didn't have a question for this particular item.
Our city minister said you had a question about this item.
Well, I had seen when we had the preliminary agenda that there was a potential for the beer garden. I was just curious why we pulled it off, that was all.
Oh.
Yes, Councilmember, the reason we pulled it was we were talking about possibly doing a public event in conjunction with this, kind of how we'd done years past. Since the event has been separated, barbecue by itself and craft beer, wine, we just decided to pull it for this year and save. There was like a license fee, a small fee, just to save that fee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, then I will entertain a, that's interesting. Is there anyone else who has a question about new business item number one? If not, I will entertain a motion on that item.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, motion, Deaton, second, Baldwin, that we approve a waiver of the distance limitation, special event permit to allow for the distribution of samples of cereal malt beverages, wine and spirits within 200 feet of a school, church or library during the Grand Slam Craft Beer, Wine and Spirits Fest to be held October 1st, 2021 at Celebration Park. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 You got, we got the sound treatment again, Mark.
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? New business item number one passes. Moving on to new business item number three. Consider adopting an ordinance establishing a date and time limitations for the discharge of fireworks within the city of Gardner. Had a few fireworks this evening. Deputy City Administrator Amy Nasta, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the August 2nd, 2021 Gardner City Council meeting, consensus was provided to change the dates and times when the discharge of fireworks is allowed within the city of Gardner for the observance of Independence Day to July 2nd, July 3rd and July 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. each day. Consensus was also provided to add December 31st from 11:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. and January 1st from 12:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. as dates and times for consideration when the discharge of fireworks is allowed within the city of Gardner for the observance of New Year's Eve. The proposed ordinance fulfills both of these requests.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Nasta, appreciate it. Any public comment on new business item number three?
So Mayor, are we going to read into record the emails that was, that were received on this topic?
Did we have emails coming?
I didn't have any come to the city clerk's desk.
They have to come to the city clerk to be read into the record.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you wish to have a, if you wish to read a, an email that was sent to you, then you can do that.
Carry on and I'll find that for you.
Okay, that's fine. You can, I'll obviously give you the microphone, Councilman, it's not a problem. All right, any public comment on new business item number three? Please come forward.
I was just wondering.
Please, please, you can speak to the, in the live.
Oh, okay. I can't see, though. Cheryl Marquis, 112 South Oak Street here in Gardner. I was just wondering if, if the display of, or should I say the firing of fireworks from the public, does that also include like shooting guns and things like that, you know, up in the air?
Goodness.
Oh, good, because I thought I heard a couple of them on the 4th of July that night out in the neighborhood and I was, I was wondering if that was, you know, if that was legal at all.
Oh, goodness, no.
Okay.
All cities in Johnson County, including the city of Gardner, absolutely prohibit that within our cities. Would you please? Obviously, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to defer to Council Vice President Baldwin if he's on.
He should.
He is? Okay. Council Vice President, you had said that you had a, you wanted to make a statement?
Where's his call?
Did we lose him again?
Where's my call?
I was trying to, I was trying to catch him before he dropped.
Well, Mayor, I could forward these emails that were received by yourself, Councilwoman Roberts, Councilman Winters, Councilwoman Deaton, Councilman Baldwin, as well as Mr. Prudy, Mr. Belcher, Danica and Ms. Nasta. I can forward those over to Sharon.
Absolutely.
I, I would love to read them, but they're fairly wordy.
That's fine.
At the end of the day, paraphrasing Ms. Smith, she's against the fireworks and she is for, and again, I'm speaking on Ms. Smith's behalf, mitigation efforts during fireworks.
Certainly.
Yep. The second one was received by Councilman Baldwin, myself, Mayor Shute, Councilwoman Roberts and Councilman Winters from Ms., and I apologize if I mispronounce it, Midendorf, Megan, and she is talking about fireworks should only be shot off on the 4th of July until 11 o'clock, et cetera. Speaks to disabilities, children, dogs, et cetera. So I can forward these over and enter them into- So I can forward these over and enter them into the record on behalf of the citizens.
I do have to say that one I did not see because it was sent at six fifty-six this evening. So I have not seen hers.
We'll all forward them over to Ms. Rose.
Absolutely. And we can have those entered into the record for the minutes for next week. Absolutely. Okay. I think we're gonna try.
Please enter your conference ID and press pound to.
We really apologize for this.
Transferring you to the conference now.
Mr. Baldwin, are you on? Can you hear me?
If he hasn't called yet, no.
You gave him the connection information? Okay. Maybe I should ask for another recess, and then come on. I know that we don't need Mr. Ro.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I was gonna say, I know, I know we don't need your participation to, to, to maintain a quorum, but I knew that you wanted to speak on this item, so.
Can you hear me?
Kinda held things off for you. Again, you, you wanna turn your speaker down, too.
You're really far in the background. I can barely hear you, but can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, sir.
Okay, great.
Okay, so you wanted to speak on new business item number three, correct?
Yes. The more I thought about this, the, I, I think we ought to decouple it from the New Year's Eve and the second, third, fourth discussion. We were all in consensus that we wanted second, third, fourth to be the dates of discharge, and I think we could move forward with that. But we've only had a few people contact us in regards to New Year's Eve, and I'm sure that there's more people that want to contact us. And since we have a captive audience with the survey, I'd be interested in seeing if we put out a survey about New Year's Eve, what we would get back with that, and we can always amend this at that time. But we could go forward with the second, third, fourth for right now.
Well, I'll be honest, I didn't see much clamoring for New Year's Eve from the public in the discussions that I had seen, both online and through our correspondence. It's like, is it? Okay.
That's not me. I don't know.
Is your kid on the other line somewhere?
Okay, well, I'm in, I would be in favor of decoupling. I don't know about the rest of you, but I think it would be a really good idea not.
No, it's on here.
Okay. Consensus?
I would be in favor of decoupling. I think, I had people reach out to me about it, so I still think it's worth some investigation, but I'd be in favor of decoupling at this point.
I would agree with that.
All right.
Yeah, I absolutely one-hundred percent agree with decoupling. I was gonna make the same suggestion. And if we can get back to the survey, once we get through this, that would be great. Just have a feedback.
All right, we can hold that for council updates if we need to.
Well, I would, I would suggest we discuss it now, 'cause it has to do with fireworks.
Certainly, but is it, does it have specifically to do with the ordinance?
Well, you talked about using the survey through Mr. Baldwin just a minute ago.
Oh, no, that was just to discuss New Year's Eve after we're, after we're done with decoupling. So what we're talking about here is, is passing the ordinance, but striking the language on New Year's Eve.
Okay, I'll, I'll table my, my comments. And I support.
Just so we have a clear record, we're proposing to strike Romanet two and three, correct?
Yes. Any reference to New Year's Eve in terms of the discharge dates and times? That would be, that would be removed. I'm assuming that the, there's consensus on the body to move forward with that amendment, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on, on this ordinance? Seeing, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance two-seven-one-six.
So moved.
Second. We have a discussion on this ordinance. Seeing, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance two-seven-one-six. So moved. So I have a discussion on.
I mean, we don't need Mr. Baldwin for, and I apologize for saying this.
Okay. Councilman Baldwin, I think this is gonna end our regular, our regular discussion on this. I know that it's a little bit difficult, because we've got a serious lag right now behind, between the two of us. Is there a possibility that, would you be, would you be in favor of this ordinance with the, with the modifications? Simple yes or no would suffice?
Can you have majority as?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. We'll go ahead and have the city clerk record that. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us this evening. While we can, we can discuss offline, anything that comes up in council updates. All right? Yes, I, I've got one. I just wanna make sure. It was a motion, Deaton, second, Winters, that we adopt ordinance two-seven-one-six, an ordinance of the city of Gardner, Kansas, amending section nine dot zero-five dot zero-three-zero of the Gardner municipal code relating to the discharge of fireworks. City clerk?
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Councilmember Versek?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin, log a yes response. Ordinance two-seven-one-six passes unanimously. As the end of regular business, we'll move on to the council updates. Does staff have anything for council? I'm starting with our finance director, 'cause I never start with Matt.
I do have something for the council.
And I knew he had something for the council. So, Mr. Wolf?
Staff is planning to send out notices this month to utility customers, letting them know that in October, we are going to restart shut-offs and setting late fees for people that are relinquished on their utility bills. Moratorium actually ended back in May. And we've held off a little bit just to give people more time, and also to get through the hot months of the summer. So in October, the weather should be a more accommodating. And we're also going to make sure we're directing them towards assistance programs with the county and the state, and also working with them on payment plans.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. We give people plenty of notice. Yes, council?
Yeah, Matthew, thank you for the heads up to, to the citizens of Gardner. What, from a percentage perspective, what percentage of the community would be affected by this?
It's close to fifteen hundred customers, or seventeen percent. And the total delinquency is about one point one million.
So seventeen percent of the community is, would be affected by this. Okay.
And I know some of those have already reached out to the, to the utilities billing department and have been placed on some sort of, of a, of a payment plan, correct?
Correct. And there's actually a lot of assistance programs out there. A lot of money came out with the federal stimulus. So we wanna make sure people know about them and assist them, get to the right people so that you can, that help.
And that, that's, that's the next one I was gonna ask, Matt, is how, how are we going to communicate this to those folks? Or to the entire city, for that matter?
We can do a combination of efforts. We can do some things like an email blast, but also send out some kind of, maybe even like a letter or something through the utility bills.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Typically, we've done this through the utility billing. We have a little flyer, some sort of paper in there that tells.
Okay. Any other questions for? City clerk?
Nothing for me.
Nothing. We set up interviews yet with, for the open?
Yes, starting tomorrow. We've had an email invite.
Okay, great. Thank you. Chief Belcher?
Nothing tonight.
Gons Garcia, utilities?
Regarding the Prairie Trace Development or Grada Development, Water One is almost done with the water extension. So hopefully, it'll be done this week, and they'll do some testing. So that's hopefully be closed.
Very good news.
In a couple of weeks. On the sanitary sewer, the force main is in place. The contractors started working on the lift station.
Great.
On the electric, we have the overhead up. And right now, we're working on the Prairie Trace Estates and Meadows, installing the underground.
Wonderful.
So we're, we're moving.
Great. That's great news. And I saw that there is some work that's, that's underway now for grading for New Trails Parkway as well. They're, they're really moving fast out there, so. Great. Good work. All right, Parks and Rec, Jason Bruce?
I wanted to give everyone an update on the pool. Last week, or this past weekend, we started our weekend-only hours from now through Labor Day, now that school's started. Our revenues are sitting at about a hundred and eighteen thousand in admissions compared to a hundred and thirty total in 2019. So we're sitting pretty good, all things considered. And then we just wrapped up fall soccer registration, and we had five hundred and seventy-three come out in 2019. And this year, we had six hundred and seventy-four. That's the highest soccer program we've ever had, so.
It's good news.
It's the greatest sport.
You ought to coach, Randy.
Oh, I used to. My days are over.
All right, great. Thank you. Economics Development and Planning, Knobek?
Just very quickly, and I'll get with the chief on this, but under the Public Offense Code, it does address space, or the amount of distance for discharge of fireworks from fireworks stands. There's actually two locations in that. Certainly, we can get a little more information on this and follow up, I think, at a future date and see if there's anything we need to do to kinda get that message out to people. But there are two different locations in the code itself, one having to do with the tent and the vendors, one having to do with the public and where they're allowed to do this and not allowed to do it itself.
Is that information also in the permit, in the, through the permitting process?
Yes. When they apply for their permit, we give them a copy of the code. It's attached to the permit application. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
See, I, I was not, I did not know. 'Cause I had heard that there were folks that were shooting off the fireworks by the fireworks tent. I had thought that those, the folks that were doing that were just kids. I did not realize they were actually the ones working the tent. And so that's a big difference between.
Well, it's, it's a difference, but just to clarify, there is a rule for the general public when they buy. They need to be at least a hundred feet away from the tent before they can discharge those fireworks. From the vendor's standpoint, they are not to be discharging anywhere near or adjacent to the tent itself.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Kellen Hedley, going on in public works these days.
Nothing further tonight.
Nothing further. How was Waverly Road coming along? I know there was question, there were questions about access to the high school from the west. I think you guys have addressed those concerns, and I appreciate your, your quick, your quick response to that, so.
Right. There's always a bit of trial and error when it comes to traffic control around a situation like that. So I believe we've, at the very least, alleviated the majority of the problem at this point.
Great, thank you. Councilman?
Since you're on the floor, Kellen, were we able to address the rainwater runoff going westbound off of the sidewalk in the road with a swell or something?
We've got the majority of the plans for along that area. There's a couple of things we're still looking at for options for one or two.
So options are out, and we'll figure out the best one for.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I know there was a couple of emails from the consensus, and we're in contact with them, right? I mean, I saw some of the exchange. I think that was their, he was also concerned that he did, we weren't maybe communicating with him, but it didn't seem like we were on track.
Yes, we've been, we've been in touch with everyone that's submitted a request.
Thank you.
All right, Deputy City Administrator?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing. City Attorney, Randy?
Nothing for me.
City Administrator? That's like, you got the, you got the squeaking mic.
So as we approach the end of the budget process with the, the public hearing next week, Matt and I and Amy and all the directors work on providing the governing body with this comprehensive a look at where we're at as we possibly can. There was a circumstance in the last two weeks where, and I talked about a couple of weeks ago, about us facing upward wage pressure. And the, the, the reason I did that is because forecasting to the next budget cycle, we knew that we were possibly going to encounter upward wage pressure, where we would have to make an adjustment. We haven't done a wage study for a few years, but we monitor that on an annual basis. Each city provides, the personnel departments with their pay information. The police departments kind of rotate through that process. Each year, a different city does it. So this year, the police departments were delayed for whatever reason, and we got that information about two weeks ago. And we're, we're facing an issue now where we may hit a crisis with the police department before the next budget cycle comes around. So looking at the new pay information, we are lagging behind pretty significantly after the second year. So when I was, when I was going over this with Amy and Matt and Jay on how we could fix this, if you recall, we did an adjustment, I think it was four years ago. But as other police departments employ a step system versus what we do, again, we're, we're lagging behind to the point where, you know, we're getting two, three, four dollars behind these other agencies who in the last year reacted to the shortages that they've encountered by upping their pay. So we have three vacancies now. We anticipate three more by the end of the year, and we're getting a tenth of the applicants that we did two years ago. So instead of coming, and, and we had a lot of discussion about this, Amy, Matt, and I did, about coming and trying to do something with this year's budget, or actually, next year's budget at this late juncture, we are planning on trying to do something where we can put something together that we can fix this issue and not have to readdress it every two or three years. So it may involve pulling the police out of our, our pay structure. It may involve a number of different things, but we're not ready right now to make that proposal. But it's very likely that we will come back to the governing body with the proposal to address the pay issues next year, but we're gonna try to do it in a budget-neutral manner. We're going to either delay the hiring of the two police officers that are in the budget proposal that we're looking at next week or in three weeks. But we have to do something. There was kind of always an unwritten rule that other police departments wouldn't actively recruit our people. Now, if our people applied there, then that's fine. We're having our officers get phone calls from other departments that they could do better, they could get more pay and do those things. And when we talked about adding officers to address traffic issues and all the issues that are associated with growth, we can't be five or six officers behind. What's gonna happen is, is we're gonna have to cover that with overtime. So any adjustment that we make, it's better to do it in base pay than it is in overtime. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that, that that's coming. And it, it's, we're not gonna be prepared to address it on a formal basis or a permanent basis before this budget cycle ends, and we have to go to approvals.
So your, your ideas, I wanna hear your ideas. I know that you've had some preliminary discussions with finance and with the chief. Obviously, we know that other communities are going to step, step system for compensation. Are you thinking that you would probably follow them and do something similar to that here in Gardner?
That, that's a potential for us. I, I know when we proposed that, or I proposed that before I took the C.A. job, it was not something that the C.A. was interested in. But, you know, and the steps are typically four or five percent. So when we have a three percent merit pool, we're falling behind every year. And then, you know, you've got hiring bonuses and all these efforts to recruit officers, because nobody's getting applicants. Nobody wants to do this job anymore.
Which is why people are having to charge more. Right. Or pay more for it.
And there's a couple other areas that we have an issue in, in the utility division with our apprentice. Electricians coming out and making nowhere near what the market is. We're three or four dollars below the next lowest in the market, so they'll go through our apprentice program and then boom, they're gone. So we have to address that as well. That's a different issue, because it's not coming out of the general fund. Well, we'll probably do it concurrently, so we address that. And then we're gonna have to look at our pay structure going forward, whether we keep the same structure that Gail Meriwether put together. going forward, whether we keep the same structure that Gail Meriwether put together, or we do something on our own. And I think that we can probably gather enough information in HR to do it ourselves, unless the governing body just is interested in a consultant.
No, I don't think we're interested in consultants.
I didn't think so, but I, you know, anytime you do your own, you know, the last pay study, they were looking at similar-sized cities in North Carolina and Minnesota, and we're not competing with those.
We're competing with Johnson County.
So, we can gather the information that we can get from Johnson County, and we also can get information from Mark to do that. So, that's one of the things that I'll task Amy with going forward.
Amy's good at those studies, I really do. She does very high-quality work, so I know she'd be able to tackle this. Keep us apprised, I know there's upward wage pressure, you talk about the private sector too, there's upward wage pressure everywhere, so that has to do with inflation, so it has to do with lack of available workers. So, we want to try to forestall that as much as possible.
May I do that one?
Second thing, do you have a question?
Yeah, on the same topic, I think it's premature for me to make any suggestions as to where you could find the funding for that. I know we've talked about it, but I think it's premature, because I don't want to pollute y'all's process in doing that in-house, and I value that in-house function. But you speak of six officers by the end of the year. What about the retirement folks that I know we've got out there?
Those are the ones I'm talking about.
Okay, those are part of that number.
They're due to retire, yeah.
So, and another issue that we're encountering now is that the Highway Patrol is not scheduling any training for new CVSA officers, which are the ones who do the truck inspections. We have one officer that just got trained. The rest of them, Trent's leaving for KBI, Matt Adams left for a state job, and we've got no new people in the pipeline to do it. So, we're trying to work with the state. Jay's been talking to the people at the Highway Patrol. I'm going to get the Lieutenant Governor involved, see if he can help. But, you know, having one officer is not enough. I mean, with what we're encountering with trucks, you know, and Wednesday's my first meeting with the Southwest Johnson County Area Plan Group, so all that stuff is going to be relevant, because Kansas Highway Patrol doesn't do that stuff here.
And to that comment, with Kansas Highway Patrol, I would suggest that we ask if we can do some sort of Train the Trainer program.
Well, the problem with that is, council member, is that the Kansas Highway Patrol has oversight of that, so what they say goes, and nobody else, including us, Latha, Overland Park, Wichita, we are at their mercy.
Even though they're not providing the service.
We cannot do a Train the Trainer. We have to rely on the Highway Patrol to certify our people.
So, Jay's offered to host the training, and still, we're not getting any movement. They believe that they only have time to train their own people, even though, I mean, the bridge that they just put in has a pull-off lane for truck scales and things like that. So, we're working on it. We're going to see what kind of pressure we can put on from.
Yeah, well, thank you. Keep us posted.
Anything else? That's it? All right, great. I'm going to go on ahead and turn it over to council then. Randy, do you have anything else for the, for the good of the order?
I believe it's for the good of the order, sir. I guess for me, going back to fireworks, and I, just for the record, I'm for fireworks. I'm for common sense fireworks. I listen to both fireworks and folks that aren't interested in 10 days of fireworks, so there's a big difference there. And it's important for me to listen to both sides. But where I was going with that, and I value the survey, I just wonder if we can take that survey another step, or how do we, I guess for me, how do we get folks that don't have access to the survey to take the survey? I don't know if that's through the newspaper. I don't know if that's mailing a survey to homes. I mean, I only have suggestions. I don't have necessarily the answers, but 3,000 of 22-plus thousand people, and I appreciated the 3,000, no matter what the outcome was, that took the survey, but there's, I think, a portion of folks that feel disenfranchised by not participating.
Sure, we were just trying to get a snapshot, and the way we did it was the most efficient way to do that. You know, and anytime you take a survey, they always say plus or minus three. You know, the results of this were plus 60%. So, you know, if you look at a margin of error, you're not going to get a 60% margin of error. Now, there are people that probably don't have access to computer and things like that, that, you know, you have to qualify the results. But, you know, it costs money to mail surveys. You know, whether we got 3,000 back via mail, I'm not sure we would do that. I'd have to look and see what we did even for our last mail-in election, if we got 3,000 back, so.
Councilman, are you, we know that a survey is going to be expensive. I mean, if you want to do a mail ballot election, that would be almost the same price in terms of the cost of doing that. I mean, if you want to go that far and have a mail ballot election on fireworks, I think that that would, that would be just as good, and it would get to everybody that doesn't have a computer.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, Mayor, but you do bring a good point. But again, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just merely saying that a portion of our community has access to an online survey, and a portion of our community don't have access to an online survey. That's simply what I'm saying. I understand the cost associated. I mean, by the way, I'm running a campaign, so I understand the cost to mail things and buy things and signs and all that good stuff, as well as Todd and Tori understand that. But for this particular subject, I just, I just think discussing that is paramount to understanding how we can do better in the future.
Well, I mean, and again, I don't know how much better we could do other than to have a mail ballot election. I mean, that would be our, that would be our other option. And if that's, and if there's a, if there's a desire amongst the members of the community to have a mail ballot election on this, I have no problem whatsoever with it. I understand there will be a cost associated with it, but if you really want to have the will of the people expressed as it would be in an official vote, which by the way, would probably be somewhat more reliable, I think, than an internet survey, even with an internet survey with some IP controls. I mean, we know that people can go to another computer and vote, potentially. But I mean, you know, if you, if you believe that that is, you believe strongly that that's something we need to do, or if we have folks in the community that believe strongly that it's something that we need to do, I'm not going to let, tell somebody that they don't, won't have an opportunity to have that vote. We've done that before for other things, like justice.
Yeah, so I appreciate you proving my point, I guess. How do I know what the rest of them want? Because we haven't surveyed them. I mean, that just proves my point.
I'm not proving anybody's point.
3,000 of 22,000 people is a portion of, and I understand it was plus 60, and that's super impressive, and I thought, I think the survey was well-written, et cetera. But I'm not speaking on the will of the people from a majority perspective. I'm just bringing up, how can we 2.0 the survey through other means other than online?
If I may, Councilman, we did have some requests for accommodation that were accommodated by printing a paper survey and collecting it, and those surveys were, those results of those surveys were included in the survey results. Public Works Director Hedley and I have had some discussions of bringing the PWAQ into the process, letting them know if we're going to have a survey moving forward, and letting them use community advocacy to go out and let people know about the survey that may not have electronic communications.
And I think that's spectacular, and I appreciate your comments. I guess on the cuff, I'd go back to what Matt spoke about with respects to electricity and the rates and time to pay the piper. I mean, we could put a survey in that that we're already mailing out through the utility bill. Again, these are citizens that are paying their utilities. Again, only suggestions, ladies and gentlemen.
What, as far as getting it on a ballot, I assume it's too late for anything that would come up in November, is that?
It's already in August, I don't think that.
Okay, and then what would be the next?
Spring election next year. I think we could, you could probably do a special election, but that's pretty expensive.
Right, so we don't want to do that. I think, it seems like we, 3,000 is actually quite a few responses, I think. I mean, probably, I don't know what our vote totals were last, last.
They were comparable.
Yeah, they were very close.
So, I mean, I understand your concern, Randy, and I, and as I said, there are some, there are some things that you can do to quote-unquote "game" the survey, but I really don't think the folks in this town were intentionally game, I don't think they had like intention.
That's never been my point, sir. I'm not suggesting it's been gamed. I'm just suggesting that there's a large portion of folks.
Of course.
That didn't take the survey. That's how simple it is for me.
And of course, and there's a large proportion of folks that don't vote either.
Oh, absolutely, and we'd all like to see that.
And that's unfortunate, absolutely, it's unfortunate.
So, just suggestions, Jim and team. I mean, if the utility bill is a good way to stick it in there, I don't know if that creates a heavier envelope and what the postage associated with that is, but it's just something to look at.
What about instead of sending a survey, because if we send out a bunch of paper surveys, then that's, somebody has to count them and tally them, and that's a heck of a job. But what about in the next survey, putting a flyer in with the bills that says, hey, on this date, go to our website, go to our Facebook, so people that maybe don't have the internet can go to the library, go to their friend's house, go, but they know that the survey is out there.
Yeah, great suggestion, yeah. Again, my intent of my comments, in case, I appreciate that, is just to get more people involved. That's it.
I think we all want to get people involved. I mean, that's not, that's never my dispute.
No, sir.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Roberts?
No comments, thank you for asking.
Councilwoman Deaton?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to Ms. Kincaid here. I know I spoke to Amy a little bit about it. Is there a way, and I know we had a small discussion that we're looking into it, to, if somebody is a habitual offender with their fireworks tent, to work into the permit, to not issue them a permit again?
Here, here.
Yep.
So, Amy and I did have a discussion about that. You know, my understanding as to what happened with the past incident is there were no citations written, even though our code does have that provision about setting out fireworks within so far of the tent. You know, I think that simply reports, which are ultimately, you know, not charged through municipal court, to take action simply based upon reports that somebody was calling the police, there were probably procedural due process issues with that. But, you know, there is, we could set up a system where certainly, and write it into the code, that if somebody has substantiated violations of what's in our code, that they could have their permit either revoked or not issued the next time around. But I think it's, in my opinion, it is critical that they have some procedural due process, because they've got a monetary interest in that tent.
Right, yeah, I would agree, because I wouldn't want just somebody to make reports on somebody falsely just so they can't have a permit or something like that. But definitely something I would like to explore, you know, for further years down, just make sure that we're all being safe.
Mayor, to Casey's point and Ryan's due process comment, I appreciate both of those. But these are first-come, first-served permits for a number, a certain number of seats on the bus. I think we had 10 tents in town?
Yeah, we did not limit it based on a certain number. They have to get permission and lease the space or get permission to use the space, and that's how we establish that. Everybody that came in that met the requirements got a permit.
So, you could have one year that has 10, you could have another year that has five, et cetera.
We've had that, by the way.
Oh, I know, and that's why I'm using it.
Back in 2020, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was really nice back then. Is that something that we could look at? Kind of supporting what Casey says, if we have a number of seats on the bus, and again, I'm not wanting to get into due process, but that would give us some wiggle room to say, I'm sorry, but we're, the bus is filled. Or is it not something that we legislate through municipal policy governance?
We could limit the number of permits we issue.
But if that individual that you're talking about.
I'm only using it as an example.
But the offending, if there's an offending stand, potentially.
And they get there first, then they still get their state, so.
They still get their permit. We can't tell them it's full. It's almost like, you know, talk about fair housing and stuff like that. They're going to say, well, you're discriminating against me because, you know.
Well, I'm all for the free market, but I'm also wanting them to be safe, and this is, this is business done in the city of Gardner. I mean.
Certainly, but I mean, again, because of the due process.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can't just deny, you know.
Yeah, I heard it.
All right, anything else?
That was it.
All right, Council President?
Yes, so back to fireworks, off to the topics tonight, yeah. So, a couple things from my point of view. And I kind of mention this every year, I love the fireworks. I'm happy with the days that are decided upon, but the biggest complaints are the people that do it outside of hours or outside of the days or those things. And so, you know, I, if there are ways where we can, and I know last year was an exception, because we were spread out really thin, but if there are ways that we can really focus on those troubled areas, those troubled times, and maybe make some actual, you know, put some teeth into it, you know, take the fireworks away or find them substantially. You know, I think a few times of doing that, maybe the word would get out a little bit more. We might be more cautious about that.
So, one of the conversations that we're going to have as staff is come up with, you know, what's working, what's not working. I obviously want to visit with the city administrators as we get closer to next year about, you know, some of those procedural things that we want to try to do. The, there's many obstacles with catching fireworks. Some people think that it's simple. It's not as simple as you think, because you got driving around the neighborhood and you have somebody shooting off something three streets over. You see them go up in the area, you hear the booms. You're driving over there trying to figure out who, what house. You got people kind of pointing. You got a bunch of people going, I didn't do it, I didn't do it, I didn't do it, I didn't do it, I didn't do it. And we actually have to see that or have somebody that wants to sign their complaint. I totally understand where you're coming from, Councilman. I certainly do.
For instance, you know, if you go canoeing or kayaking on some of the rivers in Missouri, they'll hide in the trees. I mean, they have binoculars, and they'll, you know, if you're doing something wrong, they'll pull you over. You know, I don't know if we need to go to that extreme, but, but maybe, again, setting a few examples, some of the habitual.
In the past, we have had officers particularly assigned to fireworks patrol.
Yeah.
And, you know, we try to, okay, Councilmen Winters, this is a warning. Please, we don't want to come back again. If we make a second trip back to the house.
Write them up.
Then things happen. We keep a log of the addresses that we go to from either officers self-initiating stuff or calls for service that come in. And to my knowledge, we haven't had a return call to a second house. Now, we are aware of those particular hotspots that you're talking about, and those are areas that, you know, we can address. I've said this before, and this is just my opinion, is I don't like a zero-tolerance policy because you take away discretion. And when you take away discretion, I think that you're asking for problems and you're sending the wrong message. You know, you've talked, but we've talked about it before at staff as, you know, writing summonses on traffic complaints and stuff like that, to where you got to go right, you got to go right, you got to go right. I'll never send that message, because I think it's a horrible message to send, and you're kind of telling your people that they need to go do something, and are they going to cross the line of, well, the boss wants me to do something, and maybe I haven't done it, so I got to go find something, and now are we doing something questionable? And I'll never, I'll never do that, and I'm sorry. That's just, that's just how I am. But yes, I think that there's probably some things that we can do, and, you know, as hot as this topic has become, I think that, you know, us as a staff will sit down and try to evaluate, and then certainly have those discussions with the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, of how we want to move forward going next year.
Thank you. And then also along those lines, one thing I was thinking, maybe there are ways, maybe we could get creative with ways, that the city can help to accommodate some of those people that do suffer through the fireworks, whether it's, you know, maybe we provide headphones, or we rent headphones, or, you know, maybe for the animals, we can arrange inexpensive calming medication that they can pick up. Things like that, or even maybe on the Fourth of July, having a group get together like a party or something that's in a building that gets people away from that. So, I thought, so maybe, you know, maybe it's something through the Public Works and Accessibility Committee, maybe they could look into some things like that. Maybe it's been done in the past, I don't know, but maybe there's some ways we can help to accommodate those people that do suffer through that time. help to accommodate those people that do suffer through that time as a city.
I like the out-of-the-box thinking.
Yeah, it's a little more out-of-the-box.
But it's, I think there may be some issues with the application of that, with practice on that. We'd have to talk to the folks in the disability community and make sure that whatever we come up with, it'll actually work.
And that's why I said maybe it goes through the Public Works and Accessibility Committee.
Yeah, nope, I agree, I appreciate that.
And another thing to keep in mind too is, Fourth of July is an extremely busy night for us.
Yes.
On top of the fireworks calls, we have other calls for service that frankly are higher priority calls when we have multiple disturbances happening throughout the city. To keep in mind, one disturbance between, you know, two people is, two cops are going to that.
Yep.
And you get three or four of those going on, and then all of a sudden you turn into an arrest, and now you've got two cops that are off the street because they're processing an arrest, and suddenly, and I've been in this position before, I was the only person in service for about an hour and a half to two hours on a Fourth of July one year, and that was not the position that I wanted us to be in. And that's when fireworks were illegal. You know, three hours, three hours out of the gate, I was the only person that was in service in the town.
Yeah. Chief, I guess I would just challenge the body that sits here today, between now and then is basically a little less than a year, we've got to find the revenues to hire officers to do any of this stuff. I mean, that, your case in point speaks volumes, and I appreciate that, Chief, because without officers, and Todd, you've got good suggestions, albeit out of the box, and, you know, the cost to taxpayers, but I digress, we need to find the revenues to pay for the officers so that they can do their jobs and they can do their job safely. I think we're all pro-officers, but that is, that's the linchpin to me. Without officers, none of this is going to work.
I think that we had a budget that had a flat mill, and there's consensus on this dais to lower the revenues coming into the city by approximately $200,000 by dropping it by half a mil.
Well, a half a mil would not be $200,000.
$178,000.
A mil is $247,000. But nonetheless, I think there's other revenue streams, and Jim and I have talked about it, that we can take a look at that does not affect the mill rate, does not affect the taxpayer, that gets us the outcome that we're after.
If you're talking about increasing the pilot, then we're going to have a discussion about future needs for the electric utility.
I look forward to it.
Okay, because, and again, we're talking about a cumulative expense when you're talking about hiring new officers, increasing their pay, and talking about base pay, we're not talking about bonuses here. So every year, we're going to have to do something to increase those revenues. Does that mean we increase the mill, increase the pilot every year?
Well, I think that's a great example of leadership, and we can talk about that at a later date.
I did bring up the police thing at both times in the budget talks. I didn't know we were going to need to talk about it this soon, but I think that it's going to be a very important situation. And to speak to Chief Belcher, we need coverage everywhere for multiple things, not just firework issues, it could be anything. So I think this is going to be a well conversation in the future, definitely.
And by the way, the councilmember's not running against me for mayor, so I don't understand why he's trying to call me out, but that's...
I'm just responding, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Carry on.
Anyway, anything else from you?
Oh, and also, to Mr. Corcoran's comment, taxpayer money, out of the box also, you know, maybe we increase the fees slightly on the booths or some things, so there are other ways to get around that as well.
All right. Okay, well, we will move on to my comments. I really do only have one thing, and that was, it wasn't mentioned by anybody today, but I know councilmembers Deaton and Roberts and I went out to the grand opening, the ribbon-cutting of our new water treatment facility. I would very strongly encourage anybody on the dais who hasn't been out there to go out there. It is a breathtaking facility. We've done an amazing job out there. We've got enough land and enough pipes in the ground now to expand that to 16 million gallons, which is more than what we would ever, basically sets us up for the next 100 years. So from that perspective, I wanted to commend Gons and the staff, both at, you know, within the Public Works Department, but also our contracting partners, Burns and Mack and I see...
CAS.
CAS Constructors. I keep forgetting that, I don't know what it is about that, those three initials, but yeah, CAS Constructors and Burns and Mack did an amazing job out there. And our plant, our plant manager out there is top-notch, really appreciate her and the work that they're doing out there, the entire staff, so thanks again. Again, amazing work. And when are we going to, planning on putting those laterals back, the second set of laterals in for that plant, the transmission lines?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We have on the, in the CIP for next year to do the preliminary study and line acquisition.
Great.
So hopefully, once we get that done, it will be probably 2023, 2024.
And then by then, we'll have a fully redundant system, so that's...
Yes, sir.
Very important. So, thank you again. That's all I had. Ellen, it took me a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Deaton, second, winters that we adjourn, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed any abstentions? We are adjourned.